Started. I call this meeting in the Red Oak Independent School District to order at 6:00 PM. Let the record show that our board members is present. That this meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. All board members are present with the exception of Mr. Knight. Mr. Sebring, would you lead us to indication, please?
I will. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this day, Lord. Thank you for each one that's here tonight. Lord, I just ask that you watch over our students and teachers and staff and all those that have a hand in preparing for this year as it's coming up. Lord, I ask that you provide us a safe year. Lord, just help us to use you as our guide, Lord, in everything that we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
We invite you to stand as Ms. Peterson helps lead us through our pledges.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored in taking this flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, before we get started, I want to make sure we're all on the same page here. So, this meeting tonight is the discussion, this was held over from our last meeting. It's discussion of initiation, design phase on a new middle school. We're not here to talk about posters, we're not here to talk about little hawks. We're here to talk about the input from the community for this meeting, input from this community to talk about what you would like to see in the design of the middle school. And I will turn it over to the superintendent. I think they're coming down to answer questions.
Yes. I'm going to be coming down with Dr. Johnston and Mr. Frills, and then we'll be able to take some questions. Can you hear me? Is that better? I'll be coming down and we'll be able to take some questions from the audience and that way we can, we can answer those questions that you have. So, we're not going to be doing to where you have to sign up and you get your two minutes. This is going to be an open forum where we have conversations. So, I'll go ahead and come on down.
Ms. Sanford, they just need to come to the podium. So, we're going to open it up. It's public, open forum for public comments. If you would like to come forward and give your input, then podium is yours.
I think this might be a little easier. Wanting to just kind of open it up in that way that you can give me, you know, questions and between all of us, we'll be able to answer those questions for you if we have the, the information and data available. I know that some of the questions were about the actual 1.3 and what that encompassed. I know it was, where's the school going to be? But I really want to turn this over to you to answer your questions. So, who, who has any questions for us? Sure, coming up. If you'll speak into the mic because we are streaming.
My question is, with the new middle school, would that just be seventh and eighth and we'll still have that same one sixth grade building where they're, they're all flow into also?
No, it will be six, seventh and eighth. It'll be a second middle school. We will not close the current middle school. We'll keep it and it will be a second middle school. Answer your question? What else? Yes. Hold on one second. We're streaming, so you'll have to talk into the mic. I'll come to you.
Is there anyone here from the company who is proposing to build this, design and build this new building?
Corrigan, it was the, is the architect that we are currently using and have used up to this point. No, they did their presentation at the last meeting and so they are not here. Now, we can answer questions as far as, are you wanting to know what the 1.3 is for? Okay, all right. You got it? Y'all jump in anytime you want to. I have to get my glasses, sorry. Okay, the things that are included in the pre-bond design are pre-design fees for architect, civil engineer, mechanical, electrical and plumbing engineer, structural engineer, roofing consultant, kitchen consultant, landscape consultant, acoustical consultant and others if needed. Phases of the work including programming, schematic design, design development phases of a total project design, public forum reviews for schematic design, programming and design development, typically board meeting for reviewing questions and approval before moving to the next stage.
Is this typical of a business contract to get something done, to pay all of this before there's even a contract or a bond to pay for it?
There's options to do it. We did meet with some of our, our different people that were saying that they had reasons they didn't do the bond. I know that Ms. Story had indicated to me also that they were wanting information on pre-design because people wanted to know what was going to occur, what were they actually paying for in the bond? Our original thing, if you, I know you did, I think you attended one of our town halls, was that we weren't going to spend that money upfront this last time because what if the bond didn't pass? But then the feedback came back, well, we don't want to vote for something, we don't know what we're getting. And so, that's, we, we had that option to do that, so that's why we presented it as well. So, if you say typical, it's an option. I don't know data as far as how typical. Some do the pre-design. One of the reasons that, not only because of feedback, but also it saves us that timeframe in there where we could open August of 2025 versus August of 2026 if we start with a pre-design early. So, therefore, you're not looking at escalation cost.
In the school district's budget and money, there's no, there's no funding for this yet. You're using it out of general operating funds?
We'll let Dr. Johnston talk to you about the funding.
You know, if we're going to do it ahead of time, like we're, that was a recommendation last, at the last meeting, we're going to use money we have set aside in our capital projects fund. It's not general fund, it's money coming out of capital projects. And when the bond passes, then this would be a reimbursement to reimburse that capital projects fund for the money that was spent. Yep.
Okay, I just need a little bit more clarification. The new school proposed school, you just said a sixth, seventh and eighth grade?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and how many seats do you want in that school?
We had originally done 1,000 seats. Some of the feedback as well was that they wanted the school larger and so we have increased that to 1,200. Now, mind you, that keeps the 1,200 over at the current middle school. This is a second middle school for 1,200, which would be a total of 2,400 students.
And so, in the current middle school, is it sixth, seventh and eighth grade?
Yes, ma'am.
And there's how many students there now?
Fifteen, eighty, right at 1,600.
Okay, and so you're adding another 12. And will you divide, take some of those from the other one and put it in?
Yes, ma'am. There would be attendance zones, just like we do the elementaries, we would draw attendance zones. So, yes, ma'am, that's correct.
With this design of 1,200, do you think that might be a little less than is needed for the growth what we're having?
No, ma'am, it's going to give us a growth of 800 students just in those three grades. So, that's a lot of, that's a lot of growth. If we get to a point we have more than that, many years down the road, could Red Oak possibly be looking at a third middle school? Absolutely possible, depending on the growth, if it continues like it is. But the ideal range is to keep it between 1,000 and 1,200 students in a middle school. So, 1,000's kind of normal, 1,200's okay as well.
Well, I would think per grade, four to 600 is reasonable. So, that would be for three grades, up as much as 1,800.
Yeah, it's, it's, 1,200's really ideal. I mean, you could always, you can design schools, there can be wings that can be added.
That was my next question.
There's all kinds of things you can do. You can design schools to go up, you can design schools to go around. So, you always can design your school to add on when needed. I'd hate to build it too big to where you're having to maintain it and use utilities until a need even got close to that.
Certainly, that's a consideration that I've thought of as well, is not wanting a building too big that you have to maintain and pay all those costs for. Now, the other night when we met, thank you very much for that meeting. Where it has a stand with opening this up to other bids since, my question on Corrigan is, when was the last time he built anything for us?
Okay, I'll let Mr. Frills talk about the building, but, but let me kind of clarify. I know we did it with y'all in a little small meeting the other night, but I'd like to clarify for everyone else too. If you go out for an RFQ, that's a request for qualifications, that doesn't mean you go out for bids. When you're going for an RFQ, you're saying, I'm opening it up to other architectural firms to see if they're qualified for the function needed by the school district. The bidding process comes after the bond process. It's called a RFP. That's the request for proposal. At that point, that's when you go out for the bids.
Well, certainly, but you have other people that can present their ideas to you to see if it would meet the needs better than what maybe Corrigan is offering. And also, that 1.3 million may not be the same quote for pre-drawings or whatever you're going to do by others if you open up the RFQ for them.
Yeah, the RFQ, we wouldn't be able to ask them their bid. That's not legal. That can't be part of the RFQ process because you can't ask them for a bid on a building during that process. But absolutely, when you open it up, you'll have certain guidelines that the district sets forth, this is what we need. And then they would apply and you'd look at their qualifications. So, yes, twofold, yes in one way, but no on the money side.
Okay, I don't mean to hog the mic, but again...
We have plenty of time.
Okay. Again, why wouldn't we ask for other people to step in? And the question still, I mean, Mr. Johnson's going to answer, when was the last time Corrigan did anything for us?
Right.
But why aren't we looking at others?
And that is an option. I mean, not opposed to that at all if it meets the needs of the district. So, absolutely, we'll talk about that as well.
So, let me give you a history of Red Oak before I got here, but back in 2006, the community went for a, my name's Kevin Frills, Assistant Superintendent for District Operations. 2006, they went out, the school went out and did RFQs for an architect to do a school study to see what the building needs were at that time. At that time, they selected, I think they had seven candidates and they selected. The board selects this position, not anybody on the school. They selected Corrigan as an architect. Corrigan then designed Shields Elementary. They designed this building that we're sitting in. They've done the middle school renovation. They've done the new ag facility. They've done the rebuild of Shields Elementary. They were the design and then they did the facility study for us last year, year before last, in 2019. They are professional service. Let me put it in, in layman's terms. An architect wants you establish, if, if an architect and you have a good relationship and you're working together, the architect fees are set by this, there is a general 6% fee. They can't go, you can't bid that, there is not a bunch of bartering for, you can't do it. It's by law. That's why they tell you, you just go for request for qualifications. You can't ask for bids for an architect. They can't do it. It's illegal. So, you can't ask them what they're going to charge upfront. It is all by qualifications. The best way to explain it for, simply for us, is if you have a doctor and you've had a doctor and you've had a good rapport with your doctor, they've been doing you well, there's no need to just change to be changing. Some larger districts, we don't, we're not large enough and we don't do enough projects to have multiple architects. Larger districts, Frisco, they have multiple architects that, that they use because one architect can't do everything. So, that's the history of them inside this district.
And to clarify, when he said they rebuilt Shields, that was after the tornado? That is when they came back in and rebuilt the same specs that they had originally done.
And to help just clarify a little bit more based on what Mr. Frills said, you know, the rate is set. So, it's that 6% times whatever the estimated, they've estimated the value based on current buying the products and stuff like that. So, then they have, they're involved in five different phases. One phase is the design phase, one is the schematic design drawings. So, they've, and they use, from a standpoint for architects, 15% of their time is spent on schematic, 15% is on design. So, they've just taken that total estimated price tag for their services and just said, okay, 15% for this, 15% for that. So, it's not just a number that they came up, 1.3 is just not a number that they pulled out of the air. It's part of that process of coming up with their overall fee.
Having run an HVACR business for over 40 years, I'm very familiar with bid process. But my problem is, in this situation is, with the 1.3 million dollars is, and the ideal is brought forth and all these consultants are put forth their ideals and stuff, and the general public out here rejects the ideal because they don't like the design, they don't like this expenditure, the type of money that's being spent on a particular building, what then?
Okay, and I would totally agree with you. That's the stance that I pretty well took in the last bond election. And I said, I don't want to go spend your money and the bond fail. But then we started getting the feedback and the board started getting the feedback. Some of the members were getting the feedback. Why were you opposed to the bond? And one of the main things, if you could see my board, it's a work in progress continual. One of the main things was, you didn't show, so, show us what we're going to build. We need pre-engineered information to show what you're going to build. So, not necessarily my bright idea to say, hey, let's do this. It was based on community input. And so, that, it's an option. It doesn't have to be done. It's an option. If we don't do that and if we wait and do, do a bond election and the bond passes and then we do the drawings and the designing and all the architectural specs and everything, it does delay the opening of the school because we have to do the design process. So, you're looking at, if we do pre-design, spend the 1.3 and do pre-design, projected opening, August 2025. If we do it afterwards, okay, yeah, if we do it, they may not, let, let me go ahead and finish and then I'll be happy to, for you to ask any question you have. I'm here to answer anything I can for you. So, then if we go, wait and do it after design, then we're looking at August of 2026. So, do we know the escalation? We don't know. Do we have a projected escalation based on how prices are escalating now? We do have a projected escalation. So, in the figures that we did in the presentation at the last board meeting, we showed the 1.3. If we do this and the bond passes, and I do understand what you're saying, and if the bond passes, we could save a projected $4 million by cutting off a whole year of those escalation prices. So, are there options? Absolutely. That's what we were presenting to the board last time, were those options.
Maybe I didn't make myself clear.
Okay.
The 1.3 is issued out. The architect does a design. The people reject the design. Are we going to have to come up with 1.3 million dollars again?
No.
Or is that design, that covered in the design? We can go back and have multiple revisions to get to what we need.
And that's, and that's why we're here tonight.
Yes.
We want you to tell us what it is you want to see. You know, we see 900, 1,200, maybe 1,500, maybe 1,800. That's the input we're looking for. So, there is, there shouldn't be a, I designed one thing and show it to you, oh, we don't, we don't like that. Well, let's tell them upfront. We want it single story, we want two-story, three-story or whatever. That's the reason for having this meeting.
Okay, so, you're asking the audience tonight to give you particulars on what you would like to see in that building?
That's what, that's what they asked for at last meeting. We tabled it to, to tonight.
Okay, then, so...
That's exactly what you asked for.
Okay, but...
Go ahead. You have the floor, go ahead.
Okay. So, most of our schools are inefficiently built as far as air conditioning and, and stuff. It's, they're way too high of ceilings, they've got great, uh, great huge amounts of glass in them. And, you know, I hear people say, well, it's not conducive because the lighting isn't so. I dare say most everybody on this panel grew up in a, in a elementary or middle school that had very little glass in it. They had very small rooms, they had 30 students in, in a classroom and they were taught the basics and none of this other nonsense that's going on in our schools today. I know that's getting off topic. Let's go back to the actual building in itself. Buildings when I grew up, probably y'all too, it didn't have air conditioning in it. But, we still learned in those schools. Is it conducive today? Is our poor little Johnny's, have they got so weak that they can't stand a little temperature stuff? My grandson's four years old. He busts out the door as soon as he gets out of school and he wants to play outside in 102 degree temperature the whole time. It's, this doesn't make sense to me, the way that the things are built as far as the amount of comforts. Yeah, there should be a reasonable, I don't, hey, I'm an air conditioning guy. I want air conditioning in a building. I want heat in a building and stuff like that. We're not talking about going back to the one-room schoolroom where they're taught, even though they got probably a better education. But anyway, that is, it, it just, the whole design and what I want to encourage the architects is to, don't build it on pretty, build it on efficiency and, and, and to set up an environment for learning. Thank you.
I don't think you'll get an argument at all from, from us on that as far as we want an efficient building of workspace for the students.
Hi. It's of my understanding that there are campuses that have been built in recent years that are extremely ecologically designed so that they use the smallest carbon footprint possible within the space that they're using. I feel like technology has gotten to the point where we can design a building, arc, not me, that's not my gig, architects can design a building within a dollar amount that we can afford as a school district that would then be efficient to run. I know the district has done things to pull costs down and use new technology to make things less expensive for the buildings we currently have. Seems like we could do that even better with a new building.
Good. Thank you for input.
Sorry, it's me again. Back on Corrigan, has he worked outside this district or has he just been working for our district since 2006?
He works all, he all, he's everywhere.
Yeah, it's, it's... Okay. Is he, has he produced or designed any buildings that are zero type footprint like this woman was just describing, something that's more new age as far as keeping a low carbon footprint and a cost to the taxpayers for maintenance of the building?
We're standing in one.
Cool.
This is a geothermal building.
Good.
It was built with geothermal technology back in 2010 and it saves us tons of money on heating and air conditioning.
Okay, because I think...
And, and it's not a person, it's a, it's a company and they work in Frisco. I know they're in Frisco, Capel, they, they're Tyler.
They did Waukesha High.
Waukesha High School, they did that one. So, yeah, they, they have a whole division just of education and they do, they do corporate buildings too. So, it's, it's a well-known, well-known architectural firm.
All right, well, thank you for that information. I'm new to the area, been here about a year and a half. I have a grandson going here and I left Cedar Hill with the school taxes went crazy and I saw the bond of 230 million and I just thought, you know, that's not what I want to be investing in here. But we do need a new junior high school, we just need the best way to get there most efficiently. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, sirs. Thanks for having us again.
You bet.
I guess my first one, we're... Okay. Oh, okay. I'm generally loud enough that you can hear me outside. Okay. So, I got to shout louder for, go down the wire, huh? Okay. I understand that you're, uh, this is primarily for what we want to see in the new school. Okay. First off, if I recall right... First off, if I recall right from my study in this afternoon, the bond, the bond that just failed was for a 1,200 student building. And if we go in for, what are you saying, 1,200 this time, you've still got four or 500 kids that you're over right now, so they'll have to move into the new school. And I'm being fluid with the numbers, but we're four or 500.
I believe it was 900 for the first middle school.
For the first middle school? Okay. That was this last bond?
I believe so.
Okay, I'll have to go.
Okay.
Okay. That wasn't big enough either.
Yep.
I don't think 1,200's big enough. You, you have 200 to 300, I think that's your prognostication, it's not mine, but stuff I've been reading this afternoon, you got 200 to 300 of those age group kids coming into the middle school forecast for the next several years. So as I did my poor math, uh, you know, I'm an Aggie, I don't do math that good, but in three years, maybe four, if I'm lucky, if I'm lucky, you're going to hit me with a new bond. Let's do 2,400. And, uh, or you won't, I understand that our illustrious city council here has put in some international building code stuff on us. Well, I can't fight that one. I, I can say awful things about their parentage, but, you know, we'll leave that for another state. Insulated concrete, well, it, there in the hallways makes that whole building a storm shelter, if that's what you gotta have. I, when I was a plant manager up at Metal Span, I passed the first Miami-Dade County, which, this was for Hurricane Andrew back in the day, for metal, sandwiched metal building panels. They were insulated building panels, that was steel. Okay? I passed it. Two-by-fours, you know, weren't going to go through it and ruin the building. So this is all doable, but, you know, let, let's get that done. I'm not so much on this carbon footprint stuff that I, I hear every day. I kind of give that the fish eye. I do understand a little science. Solar roofs, Kevin, would probably be good, help you on that stuff too. But the real gist of this, that we're talking about using Corrigan, Corrigan's been our architect of record, I guess, yes, since '06. Now, Mike Quickmass is, that's 16 years, isn't it? Um, okay, 16 years. Well, what I pulled off the internet, your policies, this is vendor information, new render application product, and what the Red Oak ISD is going to do to get you the best value for the district, first item, competitive bidding, second, competitive sealed proposals, third item, request for proposals for services other than construction, okay, disregard that one, other than construction. But, you know, competitive building, that's exactly what we're talking about with the RFQ, the RFP was, am I right? Okay. Votes, follow your policies. Those are good policies.
They're going to go out everything other than the architect.
Then you're in violation of your policies, sir.
No. You don't, you do RFQ, that's what they just explained.
You, you're getting, well, okay, I did this. Three times in business, you go out, three different people for bids, architects or whatever.
For bids, we do, you for bids. Now, for the architect, we do the qual, we can open up, we're not objecting to open it up for the, going out for RFQ.
You're opening yourself to a lawsuit, sir, here for Red Oak ISD, because you're in violation of your, your codes, and you haven't gone out for, to qualify any architect since 2006. It's on record.
Thank you, sir. Can I talk a little bit about the, the size? I think we, there's been some confusion on the size. We have 1,600 students in the middle school. Does everybody agree with that number? 1,600 students in the middle school, right? And that's in one school. It's really built for 1,200, so we have 400 students overflowing into our CTE facility primarily, and now we're adding portables. So if a new middle school, a second middle school was built, and we split it right now, how many students would be in each? 800 in A and 800 in B. We are adding around 300 students a year, and I'm going to apologize, my name is Beth Trimble, I'm the executive director of communications, sir, wherever he went. If, if we are adding 300 students a year across the entire ISD, so those three grades are getting somebody in math, 50 students, about 50 students a year, correct? And we have room for 800 more students in the two schools? How many years? 800 divided by 50, 16 years. That's the current growth projection that we would have for two middle schools. And again- Does that, does that answer questions for people? Does that make that A and B simpler? Right.
If we have 800 spots open, average 50 students in the middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth, that's average growth per year, then how many years?
No, that's across the district. District?
That's the whole district.
Not three grades.
Yes.
Three grades is 50 a year.
Because we looked at the 10-year growth, and that would well stay within 10 years of growth. And again, like I said, we can talk about designing a building that you can add a wing on to, you know, something that we can add on to as we need it, not have to do an entire different one.
Again, those growth numbers are numbers that have been misinformation out there. The number of students added for middle school grades, average per year is 50 students. So take the 300 out, that's for the entire district.
State name?
Mark Stanfield.
Uh, Mr. Frills, how big is this school?
This school was originally designed, was designed for 2,400 students.
So you want a middle school this size? Okay.
That would be, that would be an anomaly in-
So what was our building cost for this?
Uh, what was it, 82, 80?
82 million, seven years ago.
That's more than that.
10 years?
10, what was it, 2010?
Okay.
Yeah, it's almost 12, 13 years.
So my past history was, I was on the school board, we interviewed seven architects, we went through that process. It was a daunting task, but we did that, according to your math, several years ago. We had problem with the previous architect, that's why we went out for bid, or went, went out for proposal. It's a set fee that we pay the architect, so it doesn't matter if we hire someone else. It's going to be 6%. So whatever the building cost is, it's going to be 6%. I understand having capacity, but I don't think that, uh, so there's a core value also on building, correct? The, the, like, for the cafeteria?
Right. And one of the big things is TA, the Texas Education Agency, determines some of the building of a school. I applaud the fact that you talked about the one-room school, that we, that building does not exist anymore, new construction. And we, as a school district, do not have any control over that. They give us minimum square footages for, for a science lab, English classroom, whatever, and, and also by grade level, and by age of student. And those things are continually changing, and that's why you hire, you have to, by law, hire a professional architect for construction projects.
So square foot per student is calculated and dictated by the state, okay? Correct?
Correct.
And air exchange is dictated by the, by the state, okay? So we're in agreement there. So the larger you get for that, I mean, and that air exchange has to do with the size of the rooms, the height, the width, the length, and how they calculate that stuff. That's your field, that may be your field in construction, that's not my field, okay? It's probably not any of us in one, unless you're an architect who designs that stuff, probably no one here has the complete knowledge to do that. That's why we hire somebody. I'm, I'm sorry, that's why they hire somebody, okay? Now, you're right. That architect, when they come up with those plans, they're going to say, um, the design on how this outside brick is, they're going to submit it to four or five different contractors that they've used, and do competitive bids to determine who is the best qualified to make this building look the way we want it to look, okay? That's the architect and the design team within the school, which is Mr. Frills and-
We haven't even decided, but it'll be about others.
Okay. And a construction manager. He's not a construction guy, but they're going to hire a manager at risk?
We would, yeah, we would, we would prefer a manager at risk.
That takes the liability away from the ISD, the taxpayers. That construction manager's going to maintain, and he takes all the risk for all of those subs that are hired, okay? They have say, that construction manager has say, our school board is looking for the input. If you want it to look like a box, tell them. If you want it to have a, a, um, to be a storm shelter all the way in the foam underneath, tell them, that's what they're looking for, okay?
Yes, ma'am. I don't know which way you want to go.
My name is Ann Griffin, and I'm a, ooh, sorry, I'm a Red Oak resident, obviously. First of all, I want to tell you, it's daunting to do what you're doing. I honestly don't want to do it. I, I'll be honest about that. I know it's hard, and I know you're dealing with a lot of questions. We've got a big, a great scenario of what comes along after all of this process. That's good. We know that has to happen. But the key point here for me, there's two things I would, would really like some details on. First of all, I keep, keep hearing that there was feedback, that there was a survey, that there was this and that. Now, I went to two of the actual forums, or open, no, they weren't open, they were open meetings about the bond, right? And we went to those, and maybe, maybe that's the, the feedback you're talking about. I personally didn't hear much about the middle school that time, because that was the one thing that it seemed like everybody agreed we did need. What I heard was objections on all the other things that are in the bonds. So I don't, I, my, one of my questions is, where did the feedback come that you guys are basing, okay, what they wanted was what we're doing now, was to spend pre-bond, pre-certified, pre-authorized in any way funds for something that hasn't actually been approved? So that is one thing. And I also would like to bring up something that confuses me. I've heard from Mr. Frills over and over about how everything is a bidding process, but here's the architect. This architect seems to be some protected entity that nobody can touch. I mean, that's just a feel, that's the way it feels to us as citizens, may not be that way. So the architects, my, my question is, if we've got, we're not doing requests for qualifications, which are submissions from other architectural firms, that those fees are set. So my point is, so any architectural firm that we ask to come in here and send us their qualifications, is still going to be 1.3 million? Is there no competition in that number? Is there anybody else that would come in here and offer to be able to do more or better? I'm just saying, because that to me is good business sense, so my question-
Let me address number one first.
Sure.
Uh, the question about public feedback. Um, multitude of emails, phone calls, we did have some small groups where people had reached out, would like to meet, would like to tell you, Ms. Story, I know, have provided some information to me as well, as far as, these are the things that we're looking for. Some of the other board members as well, these are some things, Ms. Knight actually said, hey, these are some things I'm hearing from people. So a lot of different feedback that way after the bond. And I totally understand what you're saying. The town halls were based on the entire package, and so it was just pinpoint questions about, tell me about Prop A, Prop B, Prop C, and Prop D. But that's the communication after the fact. Again, in the beginning, my thought, seems like we're kind of divided again on that. My thought in the beginning was, oh, I hate to spend that money. But then when it comes back, what is my priority? I need a middle school. I need a place to put those kids. I need a safe place to put those kids. And so that's my priority. So my question was, what will it take to get those who are totally against that proposition to come back? Biggest feedback I had, only a middle school. Don't put anything else on the ballot. Only a middle school. That was number one. If you walked in my office and saw my board, only a middle school. Do we know we have other needs? Absolutely. But if that's what the feedback is, only a middle school at this time, hey, I'll take it. We need a middle school. Second thing that people were saying was, you're asking me to give you an open checkbook. I can't tell you how many people told me that. You're asking me to give you an open checkbook to give you this money, and you're not even telling me what you're going to do with the money. That's where the architectural design and the schematics and everything, that's where that originated from. Again, my thought in the beginning was the same thing, oh, I sure hate to spend this money, and then what if the bond fails? So we looked at, what's the other option? I can't remember, it might have been you, yes, that asked, well, what happens if it does fail? What happens if we want something different? Can we still use that design? When we pay for that design, that design belongs to us, so yes. So should the bond fail in November and we come back in May, it does pass? Yes, we can still use that. So would we have to spend that money once the bond passed? Yes, we'd still have to spend that money, but it throws us a year behind in opening a school. So now we've gone from August 25 to August 26. Balancing scales of justice, got to balance it out. What is it that you're looking for? We want your support. I think we're all agreeing, we desperately need that middle school. So what is it going to take for our community to come together and for us to say, we're going to do this? We're going to do this. We support this. I know that, that tax rate comes into all of that, and, and is that in our bond capacity to not have an increase on our tax rate? Absolutely it is. Uh, and that'll be gone over whenever we go back out for bond again, and all of that information. If we pass a bond, this is a question that kept coming up, for $96 million for a middle school, and guess what? By the grace, escalation classes did not go up like we thought, and that middle school only cost us $88 million. We only sell the bonds for that. We only sell the bonds for the amount that we need. We don't cash your bond money in and go put it in the bank and keep it. It's only for the needs, so we don't have to go and sell those. Some questions that have already come up to me. Okay, so what if we, if we say, yes, we're going to do this pre-bond planning, and we're going to vote for the 1.3? We've kind of already gone over that. So now, what if we say, we want you to go out for an RFQ? We understand you're not going to get a bid from anybody on an RFQ. RFQ is strictly qualifications. Is there a possibility it's going to increase that amount of money we have to ask for, so now instead of, say, 94, we have to ask for 98 because of escalation prices? Does that make a difference in your mind? Another year of growth, well, we need more portables if we push it out a year. Yes, we'll need more portables. There's all kinds of things. You just have to put in your mind and do, do the scales of justice. Where do you come up even where we're all on board together in order to get this middle school built for our kids? That's what we're here for. That's what we're here, we're open, we're open. I bet, we've been pretty much asking, just tell us, tell it, tell us what it is that you want in order to be on board with us, in order to pass this, in order to get adequate space and a safe environment for our students to learn. Question two, I've already forgotten, because I got off on my tangent, I always do that.
Talk about the 6%.
Oh, uh, yes, the 6% is, uh, you were asking if it'd be the same amount?
She was asking about the 6% for the professional services, if you had a different architect?
The, I think I can answer what you were asking. If not, you can re-ask it. The RFQ, we cannot ask the architect that they're going to charge us to do that, so...
So, Brenda-
But we go back out for an RFQ. If we go back out for an RFQ, we can't ask other people, we can't say, hey, here's what we're planning on doing, what are you going to charge us? Go ahead.
So, if we did an RFQ, right, and that's- So if we did an RFQ, right, and I'm not saying we won't, not saying we will, I mean, we're going to talk about this next meeting. But if we did an RFQ, then yeah, you're probably not going to pay 1.3 million upfront, because you've already pretty much pushed it back a year. The reason you're paying 1.3 million is because part of the feedback we got was, we needed something, we need it now, right? Build it now. Not five years down the road, we want it now. So if we wanted to expedite the process, that's what that was. He's trying to expedite that part of the process, so you're going to pay that money upfront with the expectation your bond's going to pass, that's going to be your architect, and you move forward. If we do the RFQ, there's no reason to go out and pay 1. whatever million dollars, because you missed that window, and now we're going to, we're going to do the regular process, right? We're going to, you're going to go do the bond, you got your architect, whoever it is, they're going to, they're going to go and design it, and they're going to start the process with selling the bonds. They're going to bid everything out like they're supposed to do, and get the most competitive bid, because that's what we've done in every building, that's part of the law to go out and do competitive bidding. It's what we do. So that's the reason you're paying the money upfront, it's because you're trying to expedite the process to get the building, to meet that 2025 start date.
And just to clarify, again, as we've indicated, state statute says 6% of the cost of the project. So if we, we originally had 85 million as the cost of the project. Again, the architect's fees are broken down to five different components. One of them is the schematic drawings, one of them is designing, and so we've estimated that if we're going to start this month, we're going to get some of that design and drawings done by the time November comes, and we estimated around 25% of their 6% cost for that. So it's not an additional 1.3, it's part of their 6% that we think we're going, if they started now, then that would be expended between now and the end of October, when they hoped and said they would have the designs ready for us. So again, and it depends on whoever the architect is and the cost of the project at the time. So if it's 85 million when we went in May, it may be, as indicated, 100 million. So then their fee would be 6% of 100 million instead of 6% of 85 million. And again, the 1.3 is part of that 6%, it's not an additional. It's the component of their schematic and design phases of their involvement in the project.
Thank you, that was a really good clarification. But my question is, when you're doing the RFQ, and you're looking at architects' qualifications, sure, they have qualifications, like when you go out to buy a house, and you want a new house, and you look at the qualifications of a builder, but you don't just pick the builder on the qualifications that they can design or build a house, you want to look at what they've done. You want to see some past projects. Wow, I like that one. I want something like that. That's the house I want. And then you go with that builder. I mean, I don't understand how you can just randomly pick an architect and not have, I mean, anytime you're doing anything with anybody, they've got like a portfolio. So we don't see anything that this guy has done, except for the few things he's done around here, and maybe, there's a lot of schools out there that we could go, we like that school, or we like that school. I've had dozens of these things on my, sent to me recently by friends to look at, and that gives you more of an input of like, this is more of a new age building, it meets all the qualifications, it's got lots of solar power, it, you know, that's what we're looking for, is something to look at. Why do we have to have 1.3 million? Doesn't this guy have a portfolio? Don't these architects have a portfolio where you can kind of get an idea for their design? I think that's, that's what I'm looking for, okay? Thank you.
We can do that, but is that what you want to see? Is what other buildings you want us to build? We see that building in Wexahatchee, go build that? I mean, you could go online and Corrigan, I mean, Corrigan's built a high school, number 12 in Frisco, Kurt Singer-Smith in Rodri Elementary Innovations, 2021 Power Heritage and Western Middle School, Summer HBAC, Liberty Wakeland High School, auditoriums, I mean, Huckabee's, there's a bunch of architects out there. And we, again, we don't have a problem going out and doing RFQs. But they're not going to give you, they're not going to come and say, we're going to do it for 40 million, or 30 million, or 25 million, it doesn't, it's not going to work that way. We're going to have to bid all that out, so you're going to have to choose your architect, and when they, when you contract with them, and they have a design, then they're going to go bid it out. And they can give you ballparks and stuff, sure, and that's part of what we do. When we look at the Wexahatchee High School, what'd they pay for it? What was the final cost of that? When you did this high school in Frisco, what was the cost of that? These guys have built, I mean, I'm not, I'm not stumping for Corrigan. We don't want to use Corrigan, I have no problem. I'm, they're just another, they're an architect that we chose in 2006 out of all the other ones, because we had problems, like Dr. Stanfield said, and we had issues with the previous contract architect, and I've heard no questions or nobody before about Shields, or this high school, or any other projects that we've, that we've had. We didn't have any reason to go out and look for anything else. Now you're telling us that you want us to do. Okay, maybe that's what we need to do. Let's go do the RFQs.
Well, let me clarify something else in the pre-design. There's some cost in there, but it doesn't matter if A, B, or C of the architect. Geotechnical has to be done out at that site. Geotechnical engineers have to go review that site. The geotechnical engineer survey is not going to change between A, B, and C. The topography for the civil engineers, that sort of thing is in those first frontline costs, because they have to get all that information to start doing their design to see what the estimated costs are going to be. And so some of those costs are upfront, that's the things that we're going to do at the front end, that are not going to change. And so that's with that 1.3, that's an estimate, because we don't know. Every piece, you talked about a house, number one, well, not all of them agree, we got, oh, how many people in here? Everybody's going to say, well, I want it to look like this, and somebody else, you know, at some point, the board makes that final decision, this is what the school's going to look like. We take input, but they, they're the ones that make the final decision after we've given, like Mr. Anderson said, we give that information to the architect, and they go from there. That's their straw man that they start with. So that pre-design, there's some cost upfront that it doesn't matter who the architect is, it's not going to matter what the end product's going to be, because they've got to do things at the ground level starting off. So that's some of those upfront costs.
Well, I think you pretty much said a lot of the stuff that I was going to say. I am on the opposite side. I honestly believe that our school board members should be the ones selecting what is best for our students. I don't think that we're all ever going to come to an agreement in what should be built, but one thing we can agree is that we need that middle school the fastest possible. Your likes are not my likes, and our safety with school portables, I understand is a temporary fix, but I definitely do not want it as a permanent fix for our kids here. We moved from areas that had all those issues with overwhelming classrooms, and I moved here because it was smaller, and I don't want to go backwards. I definitely don't want to do that, and I feel like our town, our town has grown a lot, that we need to move up as well, with our classroom sizes, and also support the teachers, and whatever we need to still keep it a small community-town feeling. Now, maybe cost is a big issue for a lot of households, I understand, but in my mind, when it comes to my kids and my kids' schools, hey, I'm all for it. Like, kid's schools are the most important thing for us.
And some of this, we'll come in your way too, some of the groups, like one of the ones we just met with recently, we talked a lot about what you just said. What is it going to take for us to all become moving in the same direction? And are we all ever going to agree on everything? No, and we get that, we get that. But the main thing, again, is let's all move the right direction. I really don't want a side here, and a side here. I want you all with us, and us have one side, and let's move forward in one direction. As soon as she finishes, I'll come to you, Mr. Foster. Go ahead.
Okay, I think the whole thing, I've been following this, and I haven't been able to come. I talk loud. Oh, okay. I think the problem is, is that there was no other bids. That isn't done in this day and age. You haven't had a bid from another architect in 15 years. You don't do it in military, we don't do it on homes, we don't do it on anything. So that was a problem, and I think that's the big problem. I think that none of us should pick out what it's going to look like. That is up to the school board and that, and I'm sure they're going to, I haven't seen a really ugly school. And in Texas, and we have to, the codes and everything, we have to follow that, they're going to go by the guidelines. The thing that heated this off from the beginning is all of a sudden, it's a 1.3 bond, who's doing it? The good old boy from 15 years ago, and they're probably a great company, but competition is part of the industry. You get bids. And I, and I really don't think that we should have a say in what it looks like, because we should trust them. All the other schools have come out fine. It's the problem that started this off, is it because it was, the bond didn't go through, and then all of a sudden, underneath swept 1.3 million bond? And then, or pre-bond, yeah, yeah, sorry. And so, and then also on the numbers, it was 1.3, and then it might go to 6. Well, in the architect industry... No.
Oh, the savings, the savings is what you were talking about?
No, 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 it wasn't either. It was from another meeting we were talking about. It's going to change, it's going to start at as 1.3, but there's renderings, and it goes on and on. So that's not the cap on their, how much it's costing for them.
No, you're right, that's not a cap.
Okay, so people don't understand that. This is just for the beginning phase of it, it's not down the road. I believe we need to have a new school, I understand all that perfectly. I think that you just need to be, it should have been foremost a little aggressive on how you do it, because it's bad business. It looks shady when nobody else was asked to give a bid, and there's lots of qualifying architects. And I'm not putting them down, but I think that was an underlying thing that was missed, they were saying it in the last meeting, and it was just brushed over. This, I mean, I've been in other cities with designing and stuff, and they've got, in within four years, 20 something schools going up. And what they do is, with the architects, they have a five-year plan, we want this many going, and they're doing several schools in Austin, in Bronzeville, I mean, so you really need to get, I think, another bid. I don't think, nothing against y'all, but that's how the industry works, and that's what United, the United States is all about.
Just, just a little clarification, because she was talking about that's not a cap. And again, it's just like Dr. Johnston was saying, it's, it's not a cap, it's 6% of the overall project, and that's just a portion of the pre-bond planning. So that's going to be a portion of their overall, 6% of the overall bid. And so that's what that is. Again, I'm not disagreeing with you, we're going off the community, you know, like I said, I don't like to say sides, you're this side, you're this side, but I'll just be honest, we went to the no side, and we were like, what is it that, that we need a common ground? And the pre-engineering, pre-planning came up as something they wanted. That's the reason we even went this direction to look at it. We're going to pay that amount, whether it's in the beginning of the 1.3, whether it's 750,000, whether it's 800,000, by the time we get to the process, they're going to continue to do what they have to do, and we're going to continue to pay them their percentages. So absolutely, that's not a cap, I totally agree with you. But again, understand, we can't get a bid for an architect. That's not allowable. I mean, that's against the law. We cannot go out and say, what will you charge us if you come in and do the pre-bond planning? We're not like a house builder, we have the government code, we have the architectural code, and it specifically says that you cannot get that bid. And I can give you the code, if you want that code. I'm going to have to get my glasses on again.
So when we, when we did the RFQ before, we brought the architects in. What you're, you're not doing a bid, but what you're looking at is their, their projects that they've completed, and you call the schools and say, hey, I was at the work with that architect. Some schools said they were really good, some schools, they said they were not so good. Okay, and so that went into some of our decision-making. Some, some architects were really energy efficient, right? That was their main thing, was all about energy efficiency. Others are about natural light, you know, there's a lot of studies about natural light and learning, right? So they're all about natural light. So that, that's some of the feedback that we want. We have some feedback about maybe a little less windows, not such high ceilings, okay, that's good feedback. The size of the school, whether it's 900, 1200, 1500, 2400, that's good input. That's what we take back to the architect. But we go out for an RFQ, it's not going to be based on, where they're going to be one point, they're going to be this much amount, and this is going to be this much amount, it's going to be based off of their qualifications, how they operate, how they work, their designs on their schools, what, you know, some schools you look at, didn't really look all that, something I would want in my district, right? So that's what we're going to look at, and you could be, you wouldn't be a part of the process, but if you go online, I don't have it in front of me, but I can give you a website that shows all the architects, and you click on that architect, and it shows you all the projects and all the schools that they've gone through, right? That's where I got part of my list today, I've already started it. So there's some big, major architects, and there's some little ones. So it's not based on, you know, going with the big guy necessarily that builds all these Frisco, Plano, Allen, or whatever, it's not about that. It's about the design, and the reason we've stayed with Corrigan for this, for this long, it's just been a good working relationship with them. I hear that they're in our back pockets, supposedly I'm getting rich up here, I mean, I don't know where that comes from, but if I'm supposed to be getting money, I'd like for somebody to tell me where it's at, because we ain't seen it, right? We're not out here to make money, we don't care really who, who designs the thing. We just want to be able to get a, get a building to be able to put our kids in. That's what we're here for. Everybody says we need a building, we need more room, well, that's why we're here, we're trying to get the input to do that. Because we're not in a cornfield now where they say, well, if you stop building, they'll quit coming. Well, that's not, that's not how it works. We have to educate by law, whatever children, whatever kids come into our district. And if they keep moving here, we have to keep putting, building rooms for them. If we can't build a building, community doesn't want to put a building in, fine, we have to put portables. That, we have no other option. We're bringing it to you, saying, you didn't want all these, all these other activities? Fine, they narrowed it down to a middle school. Now we're asking you, what is, what do you need to see, we hear RFQ, what do you need to see at the end of that to say, I can support that? That's what we need to know. Because if we're going to go through all this process to get to the end, there's, there's a lot of people, probably a lot of sitting here, that it don't matter what you throw out there, they're going to be a no vote. And that's just the reality of it, right?
Can I say something that may be totally, number one, I'm new on the board, so I'm learning as I'm going, but I'll look around in this room, and we're, we keep going over and over and over about bids and this and this, and we have to really think, and I need everyone in this room to think, what are we doing this for? We're doing this for the kids, not we adults, yes, it's our money, but we're doing it for the kids. There's a young man that I see right back here, and I know, Jacari, would you stand up? It's for this little guy right here that'll be going to junior high soon, that needs a middle school, no matter what. And we have to start thinking, you want to be involved? We want you involved. Be involved in Red Oak ISD, sign up to volunteer in our schools, to where you are mentoring our students, you're learning what's going on in our school, and then you will be aware of what's going on. And I don't mean to be tacky, but I've lived in this town for 53 years, and some of you folks I've never seen, and I worked for the district for 34 years. Be involved, and let's do it for our future of Red Oak ISD. Okay, can I answer her question real quickly? Let me, let me do this. I got to get over here, y'all, I'm sorry. Uh, Texas government code actually starts some of our, our things that we're required to do, but it goes over into the Professional Service Procurement Act. And under the PSPA, I'm going to read it verbatim to you, so you'll know what we're talking about. A district may not select a provider or award a contract for professional services, which is going to be the RFQ, on the basis of competitive bids, but must make the selection and award based on demonstrated competence and qualifications to perform the service in fair and reasonable price. So we can't go out for a bid on that, so I didn't want you to think I'm just pulling that out of the air. And then one more thing, the Texas occupancy code, along with the Texas Board of Architectural Examiners, I know there's a lot of different things out there, under the TBAE, the Texas Board of Architectural Examiners, an architect cannot respond to an RFQ with information that specifies the fee charged by the architect, including information from which the fee may be extrapolated or indirectly determined. including information from which the fee may be extrapolated or indirectly determined. So we're not making that up. I mean, that's, that's a law. We can't go to them and say, what will you charge? We can't go to them and say, uh, hey, for 1.3, what can you give me? It, it doesn't work that way. We have to follow the law. So I know it's different for building homes. I know it's different for building shopping centers. And it's different from our perception. School law is totally different. So I did want you to know, we didn't just pull that out of the air. That's, that's literally a law on that.
I'm, I wanna say something. I, with all the feedback that we're getting, and everybody that's coming in the meeting, and everybody that has something to say, I wanted to know, or what I was expecting tonight, based on what was said last week, where's your list of architects? I'm hearing that we're in bed with Corrigan, they're in our back pockets, or whatever is being said about Corrigan, that's neither here nor there. And somebody said they saw a picture of this school, or they saw a picture of that school, or their friend sent them that. Can we have that? Can we have your list of architects that you approve? And then where's the money that we are gonna need to pay for that? Because of all your research that you've done, have y'all paid for an architect to put something together? Because the money's not falling from the sky. We've got Corrigan, but if you want somebody else, that's not, uh, no. No one said we have to just use Corrigan, but no matter who we use, we have to pay them. So we're gonna pay either Corrigan, or we're gonna pay somebody else. But if you don't want to go with them, we don't have to. But who? Who is, who's on your list? In your research, you're saying, I saw this. This school looks nice. Who did it? You tell us. You wanted this so that you could say, here's what I think, here's my opinion. But what's behind your opinion? We all have them. They're not going away. But there's gotta be some sort of action behind just the words of, well, I want this, and this is what I want. I heard earlier somebody say, that's not what we asked for. Okay, well, whatever it is you asked for, did you bring the information as to what I wanted was this, and this is what I found, and this is who I found it from, and give it to us so that it's tangible, so we can see it? Or are we just gonna keep doing this circular conversation of, I'm not happy, I'm gonna vote no, regardless of what you're doing, and this is just a complete time management kind of thing, where we're just filling space? Because that's ridiculous. Because I have a sixth grader, soon to be sixth grader, I'm scared for him to go to our middle school. That's just point blank period. I am scared for my child to be at our own middle school, but I'm proud of this district. And I volunteer to do this. This is, I'm not paid. Somebody said that last time. This is not paid. I volunteer my time because I care. Whether I was on the board or not, I'm in the school district because I care. I'm on the Red Oak Football Association because I care, because my kid is involved, your kid is involved, or your grandkid is involved. I'm not just a mouth. I'm the action behind it. I want to move forward for the kids. That's why I'm here. But if it's not why you're here, then you're just wasting the time of the taxpayer anyway, because somehow y'all seem to think it's only y'all paying taxes, and that the board does not. I'm confused. I knew that was said a lot last time. I'm confused by no action behind opinions.
Um, we do have actions. We have met with several people, and we care about every child in this district. Or we wouldn't be here tonight. We want a new middle school, but we want the best middle school that our money can buy. That's why we want some planning in place. My question is, I don't care about the design. I don't know why people say, yes, you do. I don't. We can give you architect names if that's necessary. I didn't know that was our job. But my question is, when did the current middle school become at least or a little over 100% over capacity? What year?
I can tell you when I came. It was right before COVID. I came November of 19. And we did our, we had our facility study, and we were over capacity. So prior to that, I, I can't tell you, but I do know, November of 19, when I came. Yep, let's get some past it. He's over, so he has.
Okay, uh, for those of, those of you in this room may not know, we had a failed bond in 2017 for a second middle school, because we were already behind then. So this has gone back all the way prior to 2017, when we needed a second middle school.
Okay. I'm coming. I'm sorry, my follow-up is, if we moved in 2019, and this is just a planning question example. In 2020, when the interest rates were so low, which does have something to do with the bond rate, why didn't we propose a bond then?
We had an interim superintendent. We were looking for one, and the previous one abandoned us. That's why.
I started November of 2019. COVID hit March of 2020. Um, we went into COVID protocol.
So, so.
COVID scan, whatever you wanna call it.
What I heard you say is that we should have came for a bond
During the pandemic.
In, yeah, I, I, nine months after she, or 10 months after she arrived during COVID. Okay. Right on.
Okay, oh, she can first.
And, and you, and if I recall recently, you said you moved here when? Okay. And, and, and just for the record, the tax rate has been lowered four times up until this year since 2017, and brought to the rate it's at now. So we, we have been doing that. We have been doing that almost every single time that we could. Nearly every single time. Bringing the tax rate down, that's, that's the thing that everybody, that's what it's about, right? Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. So we're, everybody wants to build the school. Okay? Do we agree? Okay, so what I hear you say is that you would like, I hear some of the room say that you would like us to investigate the RFQ again, correct? Okay? If the RFQ comes back, and it's Corrigan again, am I going to have your back? Are you gonna have our back? I, I, that needs to be a resounding yes, because like, I'll do the work, folks. I, I'll, I'll do, I'll do the work, but listen. Well, that, that's what I, uh, well, I, well, you're, you're telling us to, these two, they. So, so Corrigan builds around the state, ma'am, and I only know because I used to sell porta-potties, and I went around to these places, and I got, my main construction customer was Poe Construction. Guess what they build? Education facilities, okay? And Corrigan builds for them. There's nine other damn, uh, architects that are out there. I want you to know, and I told this to, to Mr. Foster last week, those two men right there, they're, they're the squeakiest damn people I know, and almost every budget that they, that they use for anything that is built here comes in under budget or at budget. And, and I, and I'm telling you, like, they're so tight that I love you gentlemen, I really do, and that's why I ask you every single time before we pass them, is it in the budget? Can we handle it? Will we withstand it? And I, people hear me regularly. That's my question. Bill, can we do this? Bill, can we do this? Because if we can't do it, the answer's no. Okay? We're not just trying to up here railroad, hey, rubber stamp, spend the money, okay? But we have to get this product, process started. And if it takes us going out for an RFQ and evaluating those people, these companies, the way that you want us to, we will. All right? But the money piece isn't gonna change, and likely because the time that it's gonna take to approve somebody else for an RFQ, it's going to increase, not decrease. And that's the part that, that we're kind of hinging on right now. I mean, if, if we take the latest project that Corrigan did for us, I think that was supposed to be a $2.5 million piece for the Ag Barn, right? I think that we came in at 2.1. Is that correct? And, and that was a little over a year ago. Okay? And then, like, like literally, I just want you guys to understand is that we're not out here willy-nilly throwing stuff around. Okay? I heard people say, get rid of the pork. Okay? I hear you. Okay? If there, if there was crap in there that shouldn't have been in there, it shouldn't have been in there, and shame on us. Okay? Agreed? Okay, so we, we have come back and said, let's get rid of that. Okay? Let's not do that anymore. Okay? But today, if y'all want us to go out for an RFQ, and it still comes back, and we think the best qualified people for Red Oak is still Corrigan, can we move forward? Show of hands. Okay? So, so our, our budget, whatever gets approved with that 1.3, when it goes to bond and it gets approved, it rolls into the total cost. Does that make sense? The, the total cost of the, the school? Please come forward, because I want, I want to hear what you have to say honestly. But we don't have it, we don't have an open checkbook. We are only going.
Checkbook, when you don't have a set amount to spend. I budget how much my family household has to spend. I can't go out and spend over that amount without having bank fees, extra, whatever.
Sure.
So as my household, I have a budget. I'm asking, what is our budget for this school? And is it with the fat? Is there pork in that budget?
And that's what I just told you. I, there, there, the instruction has been given to, to cut that out, because that's what I heard from the community, is that, uh, it, I, excuse me, that's what I heard from the, the noes, okay? Because that's what you asked to be cut.
I think the clarification being that she's asking, is there fat in the budget? You're saying there's no fat in this bond. There's a bond and there's a budget.
We don't have a budget to build a building. We don't have the money to build it.
And, and what, what I'm telling you is that we told, we have given directives that you, you take the fat out, you take the pork out, okay? And then the, the clarifying piece that she said earlier is that we're only going to spend to what our cost is, but we have to start that bidding. We have to have, you, we want the designs to start. We have to get the ball moving on that. And then we'll get a budget after we send everything out to bid. And listen, I, I've been to these, these bid meetings, okay? That there, when, when you go to, to these bids with these construction companies, there's as many people as in this room going to bid for every facet of what's in that school. And, and everybody is turning in their bids, all the way down to the man with the toilet and the toilet paper. Okay? We, like, it, it's not willy-nilly, here's, here's a check, here's everything. That's not how it works. Like, it's, it's we make sure that, that we're getting the best bang for your buck every single time, and that Mr. Frills, almost on everything, on a lot of stuff, still bid, right? Right? We don't, we don't like it. It's hard. But we, we do a lot of, we've done still bids, we've done three bids, we've done it several different ways. But this duo over here makes sure that they're getting the best for you, the community, for our staff, and for our students. Okay? This isn't just, hey, give us, this ain't, this ain't a $1 billion budget like Prosper, okay, kids? It's not. The, the, the last bond, we had an opportunity to actually approve up to $200 million, Mr. Johnston. Dr. Johnston, we had a, we had an option to approve up to $200 million with, without a tax increase. And everybody still said no. Like, I don't understand that. Go ahead.
I mean, we did. I mean, based on the current tax rate for the INS fund, which is the debt service fund, projected to go out up to maybe 20 years of bond payments, 200, a little over 200 million at the time.
Without an increase. And I know that property taxes are going up. Guys, I pay taxes too, all right? Like, like, we're not immune. But the, the fact is that it, it feels like in, it feel, it's like you said about, about your home budget. It feels like the noes were noes just to be noes, not, and for not any other reason. And whenever, that's not what I'm hearing right now. But that, but literally, we've had people in this community come, come and say, I don't care what you do. I don't care how great you do it. I don't, I don't, I don't care how slim, well, the I don't know, we got, we have the no matter what noes that are out there. And that, those are if you love this community, and you're gonna be here for a long time, and you intend to be here for a long time, we gotta do what's right for children. Because, because listen, at, at this point, I, my, this is my daughter's last year in a building that has 1,600 kids, as an eighth grader. All right? I, I'm, I'm kind of passionate about this deal. I got, I got three or four nieces and nephews that are about ready to come into, my nephew's coming in as a sixth grader this year. All right? The kid's about as, as tall as this desk and weighs 80 pounds. You been in that sixth grade center? The, okay, it's tough. It's tough. But we have to come together and understand, if we need to go do an RFQ and find out what's best to move forward with this, then, then, then we can do that.
I, I, I. So, so Brian, let's, let's move on, because we got, we got, we need to get this meeting done, because we have another meeting to, to start.
I just wanted to bring up that when, if I was to go build a house, and I submit my plans to the city of Red Oak, the first thing I have to do is find an architect to engineer plans to me. I cannot get a permit from the city of Red Oak to build on my land until I have an architect bring up and make engineering plans before it'll even be approved. What this feels like right now is like we're just in this big toilet bowl circling before the final flush. We need a middle school. We need it yesterday. It's 6% of the total, regardless of whether it's Architect A, Architect B, or Architect C. There's no model homes of schools. If y'all want to go drive around and find a school that you like, and it's pretty, I guarantee you, not everyone in this room will agree, it is not our decision. Design is not the issue. The issue is, we need seats for those children to learn properly and safely in our schools. And I can't believe what some of you are focused on. It's completely wrong. A community that does not support its children will wind up like communities that we all avoid parking our cars in. That's what happens to those communities. Your home value, I'm looking in the audience. But if the shoe fits, put it on. So I'm just letting you know, I can't believe some of you. Some of you are not even, it's my turn to talk. Some of you aren't even affected by the tax rate. I have no children in this school district. I have no children going to any school in the state of Texas. I want this bond to pass. Because those kids deserve to have a learning environment that is safe, that the teachers want to come to.
Amen.
All of that. They should not be crowded. It's much harder to find problems when people are all bundled up together. Please. If you go out and build something, and you, and it's not in your budget, or you don't know if it's in your budget, you're gonna ask your friends, or maybe you're gonna go on Facebook, on Red Oak Talk, and ask for referrals, and people will give you referrals. It's up to you to qualify those referrals. That's just like an RFQ. But you don't send it to bid until you know whether or not who you're gonna work with. So then maybe you call three people, and you've called their referrals. But that's on you. That's why we vote for them. To let them decide what's right for the school. I trust them. And how long are we gonna circle this toilet bowl before the Texas, the TEA comes and says, since y'all can't figure it out, we'll just take over? says, since y'all can't figure it out, we'll just take over? Then it won't matter what your tax rate is.
Ask Houston.
Hi, I am a parent of a middle schooler, a small middle schooler who's been crushed in the halls a couple times, and a teacher for 10 years of Red Oak ISD, Mr. Frills hired me. And I have faith in our board that you wouldn't be, you would have already called for an RFQ for a new architect if you felt there was a problem. And I have faith that you are going to find the most money efficient building to build for us. I believe that you're gonna pick something safe. I don't think you'd be sitting up there if that wasn't gonna happen. I think a year really, really matters. And not just in money, but for each kid who's gonna have to go through that crowded school, for the teachers who work there. Ask the principals over there, how hard has it been to hire teachers to teach in that middle school? I think they still have openings. Teachers don't want to be in a super crowded school, so a year matters. A year for each parent whose kid is gonna have to go to that school, that matters. So waiting around another year for this RFQ that's gonna circle around to the same architect that has been vetted, that Dr. Stanfield said they they've listened to multiple ones. Yes, it's been years, but I feel if the same architect has been bad, we would have heard about that from somewhere from neighboring schools. So I'm sure that our board has considered the architect, if you, and I think you're gonna look at him even more. And if you think that there's a, that there's a problem with them, then yes, do the RFQ. But that year is a big difference. And in money, but in students' lives and teachers' lives. So please, please consider that.
Okay, quick question of clarification. How long does the RFQ process take?
It depends on our schedules. It's not a year long. It's not, I mean, it's not a six month process. It's it's opening it up and then the ones who want to put in for it, they will submit their qualifications if they'd like to to be a.
Does it take weeks or months or?
It it would probably take weeks into, I would say probably between a couple weeks to a month, yeah.
Okay.
But it's but it's based on their schedules, our schedules. Uh, that's really the biggest, biggest piece of that.
Okay, so it is possible that that process could happen and still put forward a bond for November if you were able to get through that process.
Sure.
Okay. So it wouldn't slow anything down just going ahead and doing it and just kind of resting the concerns of citizens who think that maybe there might be somebody else better out there to, that should be looked at that we're just not doing. I mean, that's a, that's what I've been hearing as a concern, and so if it, if that concern can be met, why not?
The only thing that you're gonna look at is if you're still saying, hey, we want to open up by 2025, then whoever was chosen, you'd want to start the process maybe earlier, right? Otherwise, if you're gonna wait to, if you wait till the bond passes to start the whole process, then you're you're gonna push into 2026.
Okay, I think I understand that now. And I just want you all to know that I am very concerned about kids, also concerned about the taxpayers who are having a struggle to put food on their table for those kids that go to your school. And so we, that's what I said when I first came here, if we can have no new revenue taxes and keep our costs down, especially now when we've got, you know, gas prices what they are and food costs what they are. I mean, I wanted some onions the other day, it was $5, I mean, $10 a bag for onions, and I'm like, oh, my God. I mean, I can afford it, but that just blew my mind away. So the cost of everything is going up, parents are struggling, taxpayers are struggling. It's not what it was back in 2020 when America was doing well. So we've got to be cognizant of a 230, whatever it was, bond package that just failed. We, I think we, everyone here agrees, we need a middle school, we just need to get there the best economical and safe way possible. And speaking of safety, why are you concerned about your children going to the middle school?
It's overcrowded.
It's double.
My child weighs 60 pounds.
Got it. Okay.
It's overcrowded. If you've never been in there at a time where it's not just you, like on a tour, but during the school year, when they're in that circular motion of one way, because they can only go one direction.
I understand. Okay. I thought maybe there's some kind of external threat to it or something, but it's overcrowding in the school. Got it.
And when we start, he won't benefit from it. He will be gone by then. It still means something to me that somebody's child is affected by that.
Well, sure.
Because I know how I feel right now.
Right.
And that fear is real.
Well, I used to work in a middle school in Cedar Hill, and so I do know how overcrowding can.
You're talking sixth, seventh, and eighth grade hormonal kids.
I know.
Get in their space.
I've raised, I've raised five of them, so I know what we're talking about. Thank you. Did you have something to add?
It's roughly around 25 to 30 days for doing the RFQ process. You have to put in the newspaper, wait seven days, put in the newspaper again, then there's a timeline, which I think is 14 days after that, that when the RFQs come in. And just one other point, what the RFQ process, all we do is put in a newspaper and say, we want to build a new middle school. Then the architects, we don't go out, we can't go out and say, hey, why don't you submit a quote or a qualifications? They have to want to do that. And again, as indicated, you know, there may be one, there may be five, who knows? And then that's what you base your review of, you have a criteria that you go through and get, give everybody so many points for meeting this criteria, or if they didn't meet the criteria, they may get no points. So it's, it's not an easy process. And again, we can't invite people to send their qualifications. They have to want to do that.
This, I'm Karen Stanfield, and I just wanted to expand Mr. Frill's analogy about the doctor. If you've been going to a doctor for years, they know your history, they have good bedside manner, they've treated you well, they've healed you from diseases, cost being equal, why go somewhere else? Or if you have a mechanic that worked on your car, they know your model of car, they've been able to fix it in the past, cost being equal, why would you go somewhere else? So I want to encourage you to bypass the RFQ process, not bypass, but don't do the RFQ to, we've already got someone that works well for us, has, as we see here, done well for us. We have a good working relationship with them, they respond to us when we talk to them. Let's not spend the extra time and effort on that. Let's just go forward with build, building this school for our kids.
My name is Archie Grigsby. I have three kids that go to Red Oak ISD. I have a daughter in high school, I have a middle schooler, and I have an elementary kid that goes to Shield Elementary. And so as far as the middle school being packed, I asked my daughter when we went to meet the teacher, why is there arrows just going one way? She's like, because it's so crowded that we all, it's just in a circular motion. So I agree and I understand for the simple fact of, like, we really, really need a middle school. For those that want to say no, all because of they put out a bond package for this and everybody's mad because taxes are going up, unfortunately, we're we're mad at the wrong people because, you know, every April or March, you get your appraisal letter in the mail that says your house has increased in value. And the district will sit there and say, hey, we've dropped the rate by two cents. Be happy for it. But you can't be happy for it because the appraisal has went ahead and and ate up the savings that you were gonna save. So instead of being upset at this, you have to be upset at the appraisal. If you want to go at somebody, go at the appraisal, because that not only affects your city tax, that's your school tax, that's your, your county tax, and it's, all has to deal with the appraisal. So coming at the school or coming at the city or coming at the county doesn't solve any problem. Now, to my request for the middle school, um, my biggest concern is wanting to be able to have security for this school. After seeing what's been happening at school districts around the nation, here in Texas, one of my number one priorities is that this school is safe and secure, that the doors are are locked and, you know, teachers, they, y'all need to go out the front door instead of the side door. And I don't know the logistics about how the door, you know, did what it did, but it needs to be safe and secure and locked. That way, nobody's getting in. And then my next thing is, when we build this school, when we build this school, because we are gonna eventually have to build this school, let the design also reflect that, hey, if we're gonna pay X amount of dollars, let the maintenance bill be cheaper down the line instead of going up. I'd like for, I'd like for have a design that, you know, okay, here's the HVAC that you'll have, but it costs a little bit more now, but you save over the long run of the school. So now our maintenance bill is down for that school. So and and possible expansion. So like, if we get a base bid, add alternates or whatnot, so we can bring to the, so that y'all can bring it to the table. This whole bid stuff and RFQ, if we do that now, if it's $100 now, it's probably gonna be $30 a month from now, because the only thing that's going up is the cost of stuff. And everybody's saying, 2020, you know, 2020, we could have got it. Yes, we could have got it in 2020. But see, yesterday's price is not today's price. So the longer you kick the can down the road, those that are saying no, just remember that, hey, five years from now, you're gonna realize, man, it was cheaper back then. Why didn't I vote yes then? And now I'm having to deal with it now.
My name's Mike Mendoza, and I just want to ask a few questions. First of all, were you all appointed by some secret society, or were you elected by the people of this district?
We were elected.
Okay. So we we have not been here that long. Uh, we've only been here since May of 2021. So we didn't vote for any yet. Okay? But when we arrived here, we saw that the people of Red Oak appeared to be good people. That's what we saw. And when this whole bond issue came up, and let me tell you, in my entire life, I've never voted yes on a bond in my entire life. I came here and actually did the research. I looked to see what was going on in this district. I looked at everything that was happening and I, and I spoke here at the very beginning and said, for some reason, I feel like there's a group of people here who want to remain in bedrock like the Flintstones. Some of you may have been here when I said that. And so I looked at that and I said, we're gonna support this thing, and we have no children that are gonna attend this school, because my youngest is 26. We have no projected grandchildren coming from this group of kids, unfortunately or fortunately, I, whatever, that are gonna be attending Red Oak ISD at all. They're they're just not here. Our daughter's in Dallas, our other son's in Arlington. So we look at that and we go, why would we want this? Because we're looking at the community as a whole. People are complaining because taxes go up, but the valuations are going up. There's nothing you can do about that. If people keep coming, the valuations are gonna keep going. This is a national thing. This isn't a Red Oak thing. And inflation, we all got used to not having any inflation for 10 years, and we got used to having near zero interest rates for for 10 years. And now what's happening is every time there's a delay, this is millions of dollars to do something that has to get done anyway, that the people who are voting no, which I understand there's a group of people that are the most, probably most of the people that are complaining are the ones voting no, and why this whole meeting even exists, we weren't those people. Okay? And we're totally supporting it, but we're looking at it from the overall community and how this is gonna affect the community. Not how it's gonna affect the children that are in the middle school today, because they're not gonna see it. It's gonna affect the children that are in elementary school, which we don't have any of those. So when we look at this and we look at what's going on, and we see that you weren't appointed, you were elected by the people of this district, and we came here to vote, we thought, why in the world would we question this group that was elected by the people that, of the city that we came into? We have to trust somebody. We should trust you. We shouldn't be questioning you. We should believe in you. And if we'd lacked that belief, the challenge isn't yes vote, no, no voters, the challenge is lack of belief in you. Because if everyone believed in you, we would move right along. We'd say, whatever you say, sounds good. Maybe people feel that, oh, we're being puppets, but not true. We voted for you. We didn't, but the people here did. And and I look at the task that this lady has taken on and when she came in during COVID, and you look at that and go, of course, you couldn't do things in 2020. No one could do things in 2020. You couldn't even get an architect to come in here in 2020. Forget about it. Okay? So I I look at that and I go, it's easy to look back, but I know two things. Been in the financial industry for 28 years, inflation is not gonna stop. Costs are not gonna go down, and interest rates aren't coming down anytime soon. So as a result of all that, every delay keeps costing multi-millions of dollars more for something that inevitably has to get done, whether we agree that it should be brick or pink or blue, or have solar panels, or whatever any of that is, it has to get done. And the delays are costing the no voters a lot of money in the future unless they're planning on leaving, you know, some threatened, well, I'm gonna leave Red Oak because of this thing. Go. Go. Okay? We're not going anywhere. We bought here to stay here. I'm gonna die in the house that I live in right now. So I want to see the community grow. And for those no voters, we're gonna find us a lot of new yes voters, I promise you.
I have a, something I forgot about a minute ago. The question was asked, the board has to vote to go to a November bond by the 22nd of August. So if the board doesn't, if the decision is to go do the RFQ, we will not have an architect of record when the board makes that vote, and we will have to guesstimate what we think the total cost is gonna be, and that's what the bond would be on the ballot without having an architect give us their best guess. But it'd be, you have to make that decision by the 22nd of of August, if going to a November. And again, if you don't do that, then it goes to May. Again, the estimate is over a $4 million, as he indicated, over a $4 million saving by us starting the process now versus waiting till after November.
Bill Foster, I'll beat the dead horse once more. Michelle Porter, Mr. Sebring, no one, no one, and I was trying to get more people to come here, has accused you or anybody on the board of being in Corrigan's back pocket or of either of those two men being on the tape. That is, I haven't heard that at all. And no one is accusing you of such.
It's in my emails.
Huh?
It's in the emails that I get on a regular basis.
And that's a personal, you know that. I I talked to many.
I don't know them. I have a school email, it's public. People can send me emails.
Okay. But now it can be on the red. Anyway, and Ms. Donna and the young man back there, this is about fiscal responsibility. We don't want you to be in debt slavery when you graduate from high school, or worse, have to quit high school to get a job so, and keep his food on the family's table. That's what this is about, because, yeah, this inflation's gonna get bad. The, but going back to RFQ, this is a competitive society we live in. I know it may take some time, but force Corrigan, I mean, they they look at you as a chump. You're you're easy to do business with, you are a given, your money's in their pocket. That's kind of what people are saying. The thing is, get an RFQ, and if Corrigan comes up the best, go for him. That's, that's what I'd like to see. But make them sharpen their pencil when they give you the bid, but the fact that you went out for an RFQ will make Corrigan think twice. It is a competitive world, and, you know, that's the best way to do business.
I wanted to clarify too, something Dr. Johnston said, and then I'll turn it over to you. What he said was, we have to go out for the bond, the board would have to approve the bond by August 22nd. Our board meeting is August the 18th. So regardless of if we go for an RFQ or we don't go for an RFQ, we're still going for a bond, wants to be brought to the board to go for a bond, and what we will have to use is the best case scenario estimates that we have in our hands at this time for that bond amount. So if we don't do that, that's the year delay that you were talking about, that's the year delay. If we don't get the bond on this November bond election cycle, then it will be a year delay. So RFQ or no RFQ, we're coming, asking for a bond in November, regardless of if we have an RFQ or not. So I did want to clarify that because I saw some heads go, what? And that is true. We will still be doing it, we'll just use the best case scenario amount, and again, we'll only sell what we have to in order to have that done.
To also clarify, so the cost per square foot for a building is a school building, is three hundred and eighty-five dollars per square foot. So if you want twenty-four hundred, if you want twelve hundred, whatever, you can figure out about what they are. And then you probably have to add about ten, ten percent because of inflation. That's today's costs.
Okay, we're gonna close out the public, the public hearing. We're gonna move into our open forum. We have some individuals that signed up to speak. When I call your name, if you still would like to get up and speak, please come to the podium. Jose Salazar.
Yes, good evening. My name is Angel Salazar. I live at 216 Holly Drive, right across, right across the street. We've been there almost going on eleven years, and I, I fully trust you, our elected board members, to make the best decisions for our school needs. It will be hard to please everyone on the design process, but again, like we said, you know, you have, you have my full support, the teachers are law enforcement. Yeah, you guys have my full support. Even if I, even if I don't know you guys personally, I know you guys are making the best decision for our school district and for our kids, our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. We have, Erasale, I apologize if I butcher your name. Erasale Baraz. Okay, are you good? Okay. John Willhite. Dan McElroy. Or Danny McElroy.
What's the last name?
McElroy.
Members of the board, Superintendent Sandberg, thank you for your time. I'm a volunteer too. My name is Danny McElroy. I live at 608 Green Meadows Lane in Ovila. But Red Oak is my school district. I've been paying Red Oak taxes for twenty-nine years. I'm also a high school mentor. My favorite job so far. The board has gone beyond working with the community to obtain money to start this planning middle school that is so desperately needed. The money spent will not be wasted. And I guess I can say that seven times, and maybe somebody will understand. It's a part of the planning for the school when the final bond is passed, and I hope that's in November. A bond proposal last May was defeated with a great deal of grandstanding misinformation and scare tactics that one has to wonder if this is America. There were public education forums, I saw two, that were beautifully explained. There was time for questions that bordered on stupid and resulted in, "I am not listening to any common sense." I heard some of that tonight. If a member of the board does not approve this request to start the planning of a new middle school tonight, they need to leave their resignation at the door as they leave. They are not giving the kids of this community the chance they need for a well-rounded education in decent surroundings. When the vote comes up in November, any taxpayer that votes no is showing their intolerance of schoolchildren getting an education. The cost of this school building in tax dollars is minimal. In my book, "No to the Bond" equals "I Hate Kids." Remember, they are our workers and leaders in the future, and you will get what you paid for. Thank you.
Mr. Foster? Bill Foster? Mr. Hunt, Doug Hunt?
My name is Doug Hunt. I live in Ovila. I'm on the Ovila City Council. My business is access self-storage up there on 342 and Ovila Road. I pay taxes at my house, and I pay a whole lot of taxes at my business. I paid about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in property taxes last year. I'm guessing probably sixty percent of that went to the school district. It's a lot of money, but I believe we need the middle school, and I'm in full support of building the middle school. And I'll be standing behind you to help make this middle school happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Stanfield? Kim Sturman?
I'm Kim Sturman. I've been in Red Oak for about a little over a year and a half. And when I first heard about the bond, it was shocking to me about how much it was and scary, because I just moved here from a community that really overtaxed its citizens to the point where after my house was paid off, I'm paying nine hundred dollars a month in school taxes and insurance. And so I downsized and moved here. Love my neighborhood, want to retire here. I have a grandson still going to this school. I'm an honorary lifetime PTA award member. I've been taught at district PTA, I've been very involved. I was volunteers for years for three kids, then two stepkids, and very involved in the community and very concerned about students. And yes, overcrowding is a huge issue. I've worked in a junior high, I've seen how horrible it can be, and those people really aren't humans yet a lot of the time. So, that being said, I think we all need to know that we stand here before you, and we trust you to do the right thing. And the right thing is to build us a junior high school that's big enough to anticipate growth. I have thought of the whole idea about getting rid of shields. We've talked about the old shield school. Maybe if we built the new middle school big enough, you could use some of that space for office, storage, whatever the case may be. And that way, shields, the old shields, would be a revenue for sales plus taxes if a new build business bought it. So there's just ways to be very fiscally responsible to the taxpayers, and I'm all about trying to find a win-win for everybody. And that's why the whole concept of opening up for someone new is a concern for me, because I've been in business, and I know how that works. So, but we trust you, you're a school board, and I wasn't here to elect any of you, but I certainly will be participating in the future. And I thank you for your time, and I thank you for reaching out to me personally after I spoke in June. And I appreciate that, because it builds trust and it builds confidence. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Beth Lopez?
So tall. Good evening, my name's Beth Lopez. I've lived at 523 La Cresta Drive in Red Oak since 1986. I have three daughters who went to school in Red Oak. They encompass every part of the bell curve of educational need, and all of their needs were met by our school district. The two of them who can be gainfully employed are doing wonderfully and contributing to our metroplex. Our other one is just our queen of the universe, and she'll live with us forever. I am highly in favor of y'all voting to get this thing started tonight. In addition to being a parent in Red Oak and on PTA and all the other things, I've taught in Red Oak since 2004, because by the grace of God, a music job opened, and there aren't a lot of those. I love my district, I love my school, I love my little short people, and a bunch of them are going to a school that's not big enough for them this fall. And many of them are in that eighty-pound, almost-as-tall-as-the-table category, and they're gonna get knocked around, and that makes me mad. But I can't fix that right this minute, but we can fix this going forward. Because the school I'm at, we opened at four hundred and thirty students. Now we're at almost seven hundred, seven year, eight years later. It's not gonna get smaller. Our current middle school isn't safe for children. Too many students, not enough physical space. They are still developing reasoning skills, and a small vocal minority is impeding our progress here. I understand we're never gonna all agree, but we still have to move forward. Thank you so much for your time, and we get started on the fifteenth.
Mike, Mike Mendoza?
Mike Mendoza, 232 Stonegate Way, Red Oak. I just want you to understand, you have our support, we're the yes people. Okay, I was yes for everything, okay? There was nothing in there. I was not the one saying there's too much fat, okay? And I was pretty controversial on Facebook. I had to get off 2.0 and a few things like that. But I'll tell you, everything is going up, it's not gonna stop. We take a look at, in our neighborhood, the last house just sold for eight hundred and twenty thousand, okay? And it's coming, it's not gonna stop. You look at the apartments that are going up, you're gonna see rents of three thousand, thirty-five hundred dollars in rents. You say, "No, that's not possible." It is gonna happen. Everything is gonna happen, it's gonna be going on, whether we agree with it or disagree with it, however anyone feels, it's gonna happen. And the students are coming, and the parents are bringing kids, and it's not gonna stop. So I think that we have to understand that regardless of how we all feel about the growth of this city, we have to be able to plan for it. The infrastructure is a disaster here, you could see it. I don't know where everyone's gonna go on Ovila, I just don't see it. I got a drive-on Pierce coming off of cold, and it's a mess, and there's potholes and everything else. But at the end of the day, there's nothing we can do about that. The growth is coming, we have to plan for the growth. I, I do understand, trying to do it in phases, you can't plan for four or five, eight hundred students more than what are here right now, because you gotta pay for that. But I love the idea of building something where we can add on to it if we need to, and thinking of that future, because it's coming, like it or not. It's just the way it's gonna be. So I do agree that you guys should move forward in getting this taken care of, so that we can have this bond in November. And then we, as yes voters, are gonna work our behinds off to find you more yes voters. So have the confidence in us that we are going to put in the time to find you the yes voters, because I do not believe it's possible to change the nos.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our meeting. We will not go into closed session, we don't have anything to, to go into discuss. The time is 7:58 PM, and this meeting is adjourned.